Attention, I'd like to call the Opelika City Council Meeting, February the 4th, 2020, to order. Call roll please, Mr. Schibin.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Mr. Smith T.
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
All are present.
Tonight, we're honored to have Mr. Greg Smith from Trinity United Methodist Church with us, and he's going to lead us in the invocation. As he makes his way to the podium, I'd also like to invite Blakely Parish and Ava Thomas from Morris Avenue Intermediate School. And after Mr. Smith does the invocation, these young ladies will lead us in the place of allegiance, and if you would stand, please.
Kinnigan, if you'd have a prayer would be... Father, we just thank you for the things you've blessed us with. I pray for these leaders who have a heart for service, and as they preside over the government of this community, let us take a moment and be thankful for the things that we have, many blessings you bestowed upon us, this country, this state, this community, which allows us to worship you in any manner that we see fit. Freedom is a wonderful thing. Christ is freedom. Ask that you be with these who govern. Give them a heart, a pastoral heart of compassion, wisdom, so that they may speak for those who are not here, and they represent. I pray these things in Jesus' name and for His sake. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are the United States of America, and we are a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. You all may presently receive a copy of the minutes from the January 21st, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
No motion for approval.
They have a motion and a second. Is there any addition, deletions, or corrections? Having none, call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye. The next item is a public hearing to fix the assessment for a demolition of a building located at 207A in the amount of $21,197.19.
I declare the public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my right and do so at this time.
I'd like to get into the city council, Mayor. About the demolition, I couldn't watch it. I had to have one go, but a couple of cars that the old horses that I had over there were taken away, and I would like to have those back, please. And I don't know what happened to them. But, yeah, two of my cars was taken. Yeah, I'm already swarmed, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And also, some, a couple, I thought this was a demolition of a building, but also lots of sidewalks and stuff like that was taken up and stuff too. It wasn't just demolition of a building. So, I was trying to figure out, you know, where my cars were, and could something be done about that.
Mr. Martin, would you again that hadn't happened with that?
Jeff. All. State wants a demolition that's been bid and awarded by city council, that any property on that becomes the property of the demolition contractor, but I would give them that information if he wants to contact them.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Chef Campbell. Others? I declare the public hearing closed.
The next public hearing is to fix the assessment for a removal of a building located at 3307 Arnold Avenue in the amount of $6,162.50.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my right and do so at this time.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my right and do so at this time.
Having none, I declare the public hearing closed.
The final public hearing is for a rezoning of 32.45 acres at 2899 Gateway Drive.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my right and do so at this time. Attorney Kelly, 404 Hill Flow Avenue.
I'm here to speak related to two topics. Opposed, rezoning. I'm in favor of all the parcels being rezoned to the PUD, except for parcel number four, the truck refueling station. I will keep my comments brief, but I think I have some information that is relevant to the truck traffic on I-85, and estimated tractor-trailers, 18-wheelers, coming off of I-85 at that location. I received this information from Dawson Grant, who is a senior analyst at Aldoq Enterprise Information, that looks at traffic monitoring, data collection, and data management group for the Maintenance Bureau, and he's with Aldoq. The particular points that I would like to raise, and this talks about average daily traffic, so in a 24-hour period, don't know what day it was done, the last count was done, and analysis was done in 2018. If you're coming from Montgomery, going towards Atlanta, and you exited 58, before you get to 58, there is an average daily trip of 10,695 18-wheeler tractor-trailers. When you get to the ramp to exit off, there is 343 tractor-trailers that exit at that ramp. Simultaneously, on the other side, inverse, on the south side of the interstate, there is a total traffic of tractor-trailers of 11,496, and tractor-trailers exiting from 58 on to I-85 going towards Atlanta is 770. I think these, and we have no idea, you know, your estimate would be as good as mine, how many would be coming off that interchange to go to the fuel station. I mean, that's just, that's not even anything we could even crudely estimate at all, but this is just the tractor-trailer vehicles that are on this interstate and exiting and re-entering I-85. So, those are just the statistics that I wanted to bring out to you. I don't know if any of that is relevant, or if they have been touched upon by the transportation consultant, but just wanted to reinforce that.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We do, and are, in doing traffic studies, as part of all of this, and Mr. Parker has been involved in that, and we will, we, right now, we feel comfortable with what is in there. In fact, part of the ordinance includes traffic study and maybe some even lighting of the turn lanes and things to accommodate this, the project.
Now, I was just, outside of everything else, whether it's level of service, or what improvements need, you know, that's fine, that's what'll have to be done. It's just, what I saw is the phenomenal number of vehicles, tractor-trailers exiting.
You are correct. And so, we have, we have taken that into account in the ordinance.
My second point is one that I've raised before. When I came here in 2007, it wasn't too many months till I said, exit 58 is the crown jewel of interchanges between Montgomery and Atlanta. I felt like at that time, you know, as your ex-planning director, it was my job to try to preserve the kind of land uses that we would want to have on that side of the interchange. In fact, in probably 2012, when the Eagle Station came into being, their initial interest was to have 18-wheeler fuel stations. At that time, not only myself, but the rest of the staff, who review proposed uses, zoning changes, and subdivisions, indicated that we did not feel like at that time that a tractor-trailer fuel station was appropriate. And since that time, there has been many new uses, and my belief is still that we can have a better product at that main entrance to 32 acres of the PUD than a truck fueling station. Thank you.
Others? I declare public hearing closed. I couldn't tell whether Dr. Ready was coming to the podium or just visiting.
Well, I just came to listen to your talk.
Good to see you. Bid, Ms. Finley?
We're asking the council to approve a purchase of 12024 Transylvania. The bid opening date was January 27th for the Police Department. The bid was mailed to 12 vendors, 2 bids were received. Recommend the contract be awarded to Hugland Construction on their low bid, meeting specifications in amount of $306,402.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Having none, call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye. The next item is a public hearing to fix the assessment for a demolition of a building located at 207A in the amount of $21,197.19.
I declare the public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my right and do so at this time.
I'd like to get into the city council, Mayor. About the demolition, I couldn't watch it. I had to have one go, but a couple of cars that the old horses that I had over there were taken away, and I would like to have those back, please. And I don't know what happened to them. But, yeah, two of my cars was taken. Yeah, I'm already swarmed, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And also, some, a couple, I thought this was a demolition of a building, but also lots of sidewalks and stuff like that was taken up and stuff too. It wasn't just demolition of a building. So, I was trying to figure out, you know, where my cars were, and could something be done about that.
Mr. Martin, would you again that hadn't happened with that?
Jeff. All. Oregon State wants a demolition that's been bid and awarded by city council, that any property on that becomes the property of the demolition contractor, but I would give them that information if he wants to contact them.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Chef Campbell. Others? I declare the public hearing closed.
The next public hearing is to fix the assessment for a removal of a building located at 3307 Arnold Avenue in the amount of $6,162.50.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my right and do so at this time.
Having none, I declare the public hearing closed.
The final public hearing is for a rezoning of 32.45 acres at 2899 Gateway Drive.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my right and do so at this time.
Attorney Kelly, 404 Hill Flow Avenue. I'm here to speak related to two topics. Opposed, rezoning. I'm in favor of all the parcels being rezoned to the PUD, except for parcel number four, the truck refueling station. I will keep my comments brief, but I think I have some information that is relevant to the truck traffic on I-85, and estimated tractor-trailers, 18-wheelers, coming off of I-85 at that location. I received this information from Dawson Grant, who is a senior analyst at Aldoq Enterprise Information, that looks at traffic monitoring, data collection, and data management group for the Maintenance Bureau, and he's with Aldoq. The particular points that I would like to raise, and this talks about average daily traffic, so in a 24-hour period, don't know what day it was done, the last count was done, and analysis was done in 2018. If you're coming from Montgomery, going towards Atlanta, and you exited 58, before you get to 58, there is an average daily trip of 10,695 18-wheeler tractor-trailers. When you get to the ramp to exit off, there is 343 tractor-trailers that exit at that ramp. Simultaneously, on the other side, inverse, on the south side of the interstate, there is a total traffic of tractor-trailers of 11,496, and tractor-trailers exiting from 58 on to I-85 going towards Atlanta is 770. I think these, and we have no idea, you know, your estimate would be as good as mine, how many would be coming off that interchange to go to the fuel station. I mean, that's just, that's not even anything we could even crudely estimate at all, but this is just the tractor-trailer vehicles that are on this interstate and exiting and re-entering I-85. So, those are just the statistics that I wanted to bring out to you. I don't know if any of that is relevant, or if they have been touched upon by the transportation consultant, but just wanted to reinforce that.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We do, and are, in doing traffic studies, as part of all of this, and Mr. Parker has been involved in that, and we will, we, right now, we feel comfortable with what is in there. In fact, part of the ordinance includes traffic study, and maybe some even lighting of the turn lanes and things to accommodate this, the project.
Now, I was just, outside of everything else, whether it's level of service, or what improvements need, you know, that's fine, that's what'll have to be done. It's just, what I saw is the phenomenal number of vehicles, tractor-trailers exiting.
You are correct. And so, we have, we have taken that into account in the ordinance.
My second point is one that I've raised before. When I came here in 2007, it wasn't too many months till I said, exit 58 is the crown jewel of interchanges between Montgomery and Atlanta. I felt like at that time, you know, as your ex-planning director, it was my job to try to preserve the kind of land uses that we would want to have on that side of the interchange. In fact, in probably 2012, when the Eagle Station came into being, their initial interest was to have 18-wheeler fuel stations. At that time, not only myself, but the rest of the staff, who review proposed uses, zoning changes, and subdivisions, indicated that we did not feel like at that time that a tractor-trailer fuel station was appropriate. And since that time, there has been many new uses, and my belief is still that we can have a better product at that main entrance to 32 acres of the PUD than a truck fueling station. Thank you.
Others? I declare public hearing closed. I couldn't tell whether Dr. Ready was coming to the podium or just visiting.
Well, I just came to listen to your talk.
Good to see you. Bids, Ms. Finley?
We're asking the council to approve a purchase of 12024 Transylvania. The bid opening date was January 27th for the Police Department. The bid was mailed to 12 vendors, 2 bids were received. Recommend the contract be awarded to Lani Carport on their low bid, meeting specifications in amount of $33,513.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Having none, call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for the market book, for the market book coverage replacement. The bid opening date was January 28th for the Engineering Department. The bid was mailed to 12 vendors, 6 bids were received. Recommend the contract be awarded to Hugland Construction on their low bid, meeting specifications in amount of $366,402.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Having none, call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
We're asking the council to repeal and replace Resolution Number 1420, that awarded Siemens Industry a bid for single voltage regulators, under total bid price of $32,510. On January 20th, first, the council awarded a contract to Siemens Industry for the total bid price of $32,510. The bid price, the bid, the total bid price of 300, of $32,510 should have been the total unit price. We're asking the council to repeal and replace Resolution 1420 with the resolution that is on the agenda tonight, awarding the bids to Siemens Industry for the total bid price of $617,690.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Having none.
Is this the resolution we were playing, or is this...
Yeah, this is the resolution that changed it from one unit to this.
That's correct.
Others? Call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for the Columbus Parkway, Intellivest Stormwater Covenants. The bid opening date was January 28th for the Engineering Department. The bid was mailed to 12 vendors, 5 bids were received. Recommend the contract be awarded to Evergreen Erosion Control on their low bid, meeting specifications in amount of $738,972.50.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Having none, call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions, Mr. Governor?
Mr. President, the first of the resolution approves travel expense reports submitted by Mayor Fuller, President Smith, and Laura Hughley of Economic Development.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Having none, call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions, Mr. Governor?
Mr. President, the first of the resolution approves travel expense reports submitted by Mayor Fuller, President Smith, and Laura Hughley of Economic Development.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Having none, call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
The second resolution authorizes the mayor to dispose of certain surplus municipal property that's owned by the city of Opelika.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Having none, call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Back in December, East Alabama Paving Company, at the city's request, paved the parking lot at the Duck Heritage Preserve in Sediki Nature Park, which is located at 3600 Petal Parkway. The city has been awarded a grant, but has not received grant funds. This is authorizing payment of the invoice to East Alabama Paving Company in the amount of $21,470, and any grant funds will be used to reimburse the general fund.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Having none, call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
The fourth resolution fixes the amount of the assessment for the demolition and removal of the building located at 207 Avenue A in the amount of $21,197.19.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
I just have a question. Yeah, you had mentioned like sidewalks, was that a part of, was that a part of the mission?
These stairs were remaining, sidewalks that were crumbling, leading up to that building were made per my requirements.
Okay.
No, we're not city sidewalks, they were sidewalks leading up to the former building.
Okay.
And as discussed previously, there's a blank on the resolution in our files, in our packages, and that interest rate will be 1% the current New York prime, which is 4.75%, so the approval will be at 3.75%. Any others questions? Call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
The fifth resolution fixes the amount of the assessment for the demolition and removal of the building located at 3307 Arnold Avenue in the amount of $6,162.50.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
This will also carry that same interest rate.
I do have one more question. Do you feel like... No. The, I guess people can pay back in installments, like they don't have to pay. Do we give them a time limit? A year, three years to pay back the money?
I think until they pay back.
Okay.
The council, they will be set at a letter indicating they can make 10 payments over a 10-year period of time.
That's right, 10 years.
The state law allows, if they choose, they have an option within 30 days to pay off in total for over installment annual, it's annual payments over a 10-year period by state, at that interest rate of 3.75% if they choose. And if they don't choose the option, if they don't respond to the Revenue Department within 10, within 30 days, they lose that option to pay over 10 years. Has to be paid in full if they don't exercise that option within 30 days.
Thank you. Call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution Number 6 awards the contract for citywide, for the citywide striping project, Ozark Striping Company on their subtle bid. As part of this resolution, the city council has budgeted $1,500,000 for the annual resurfacing program. This resolution allot of that amount, $1,300 for resurfacing and $200,000 to the striping contract. This is what we did last year also.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Do we have a location in mind, or do you start with the...
All over the city, if you have a specific location, just let Mr. Martin know, the mayor, and they'll forward it to me, and we'll schedule it.
Columbus Parkway is one of them.
Yeah, and I was about to see complaints, but, okay.
And I'm one of them complaining.
Call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
The seventh resolution authorizes the submission of a grant application to the United States Economic Department Administration for supplemental disaster funding. The purpose of this grant is to extend Veterans Parkway, to extend or to improve transportation connectivity, and to support economic development.
Is there a motion for approval?
No motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
The seventh resolution authorizes the submission of a grant application to the United States Economic Department Administration for supplemental disaster funding. The purpose of this, uh, uh, grant is to extend Veterans Parkway to extend or to improve transportation connectivity and to support economic development.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's discussion?
So, this is just saying, if we get this grant, that the city is committed, they enter, can you do without?
Yeah, that'd be our lock, which is twenty percent.
Others? Call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
The eighth resolution approves the annual appropriation contract with the Chamber of Commerce. The amount appropriated to the chamber for this fiscal year is sixty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
There's discussion? Have a non-call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number nine establishes and designates the official bank depositories and authorizes certain persons to sign on checks on behalf of the city.
Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
There's discussion? Have a non-call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number ten approves and authorizes a development agreement between the city and Intellivest Incorporated. This is for the, uh, construction of drainage improvements and a new drainage cover underneath the Columbus Parkway between South Fourth Street and South Sixth Street.
Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's discussion? Have a non-call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number eleven approves an agreement with Skipper Consulting for a new regional transportation study.
Is there a motion for approval? Have a motion, a second, there's discussion. Have a non-call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number twelve approves an engagement letter with Starnes, Davis, Florrie LLP and Sanford and Denson LLP. Uh, this engages attorneys to represent the city, uh, in matters pending before the, before A.D.M. with respect to the new quarry application, and also in the event of litigation, to represent the city in, in that litigation.
Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's discussion? Have a non-call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number thirteen is a resolution expressing the, uh, city council's opposition to the proposed granite quarry located on Lee Road one sixty-eight.
Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's discussion? Have a non-call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Ordinances, Mr. Gunnar?
The, uh, first ordinance is before the council for first reading, and it comes to the council with positive recommendation of the Okalika Planning Commission. This is a ordinance to rezon certain properties, uh, located at, uh, known as the Caps Landing Entertainment District to a PUD. It's located on thirty-two point forty-five acres and approves the development plan for that project.
As for a member of the council to introduce this ordinance? Mr. Cannon, thank you for doing so.
Mr. President, the, uh, second ordinance, uh, is also before the council for first reading. This authorizes the city to sell the lot located at fifteen oh six Harper Street. Uh, property would be sold to Hometown Properties LLC, uh, at the appraised price of eight thousand dollars.
As for a member of the council to introduce this ordinance? Mr. Smith T, thank you.
And, uh, thirdly, the, uh, third ordinance, uh, is an ordinance that sets cutoff dates for the municipal election. Uh, the date of the election, this is to elect the mayor and all five council seats. The date of the election is August twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand twenty. If a runoff election is required, that runoff would be held on October the sixth, and the date to begin qualifying for municipal offices is July seventh, two thousand twenty.
As for a member of the council to introduce this ordinance, please? Ms. Jones, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gunnar. Uh, under appointments, uh, Ms. Raven Harvest has agreed, if reappointed, to continue serving on the Board of Zoning Adjustments for a term that would expire February eleventh of two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Harvest?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
We do have another appointment that, uh, that Mr. Cannon would like to, uh, address, please.
We have a vacancy on the Lee Russell Council of Governance MPO Committee, and Cory Grant has, uh, submitted his application to be, uh, considered for an appointment to some type of a, a city appointment, and he would be well suited for this, and I'd like to nominate Cory Grant for this.
Uh, we have a nomination. Uh, Mr. Gunnar, um, do I first ask if we want to add this to the agenda, or how do we go about that?
Well, it's not on the agenda, so it would have to be added to the agenda.
All right. What should first, don't you?
Uh, add this to the agenda, appoint to the MPO to be the, the Russell Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smith T.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Now, what is your motion?
Ma'am, my motion is to appoint Kerry Grant to the.
Cory. Uh, we have a motion, is there a second? Call roll please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?